The meeting will come to order now, please. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation to be given by Randy Brown, Pastor of the Lowell Assembly of God.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus Christ. We thank you for your presence here this evening. Father, your word says that unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain that build it; and unless the Lord keeps the city, they labor in vain that guard it. Father, we ask you, in the name of Jesus, tonight, to guard this city and to keep this city and to bless the inhabitants and the leadership of this city. Your word says that the heart of the king is in the hand of the Lord, and like a river, he turns it with us soever he will. We ask you tonight for unity. We ask you tonight for vision. We ask you tonight, God, for wisdom in the hearts and minds of these council members, the mayor, tonight. Father, I pray that you'll direct their mind, their heart, towards you. I pray you'd give them supernatural vision into the future to lead this community. I thank you, God, for what you're doing in this great city. And I thank you, Lord, that the plans that you have for us are plans for good and not for evil, plans to give us a future and a hope. We bless you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Kamala Lamons?
Here.
Ted Morrell?
Here.
Eric Schein?
Here.
Darren Brock?
Here.
Keith Williams?
Here.
Carol Harmon?
Here.
Marty Latham?
Here.
Sean Ingram?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 710 of the City of Lowell, Arkansas, authorizing the issuance and sale of capital improvement revenue bonds, Series 2006, and prescribing other matters relating thereto. Gary?
You'll recall that we have a bond issue that was originally issued for two purposes: to build Step Sewer System and for the parks. And it was about three and a half million dollars, and after reserve funds and loan closing costs and so on, and purchasing the park property and other things, we have about a million eight, I believe, or a million nine dollars remaining in that bond. It's not a good thing, the bond, people say, to pay back a bond. The bond council sharply advises, don't just turn this money back in. Your bonding capacity for the city, your bonding rating will receive some demerit, so to speak, if you do that. And so, since we aren't building the Step Sewer Treatment System again, we approached the bond council and the people who had issued the bonds and asked them if we could change the direction of that and just spend it. Our argument was, we're going to be spending it to provide sewer to areas of Lowell that need sewer capacity. We're just going to use a regular gravity sewer pipe instead of a pumped pressure sewer pipe, and surely that won't make a big difference to you about what kind of sewer pipe your bondholders are financing. So they studied that and came back and agreed with us and said that if the city council would amend the ordinance that had originally established the authority to issue these bonds, that we could then use the money to build gravity sewer mains. But they did caution us that we should try to build those mains as close as possible to the areas that were going to be served by the original Step Sewer System. So with that, we asked the bond council to draft an ordinance, which you have in your packet, and we are here tonight. After this public hearing, you'll see later on in the agenda, that we're asking you to vote on this under new business. But for now, just wanted to introduce that and see if we have any comments from the public. So I'll sit down and...
Any public comments? Since there was no comments on the public hearing, it was closed. Any comments from the council?
Should we talk about this when it comes up on the agenda?
Pardon me?
Shouldn't we talk about this when it comes up on the agenda? Would that be okay?
Yes, we can talk about it later if you want to. Public hearing is now closed. Next item is a consent agenda. Lowell City Council minutes, the regular meeting, February 6, 2007, and the financial statement for January 2007. Hear a motion and second to pass the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Second.
Eric, do you have a question? Roll call, please.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Now open up the meeting for the public forum.
Mr. Schumaker, 315 Center Drive, Lowell. Mayor, the first thing I want to talk about, I'm not going to make any friends or influence any people. Now, I was raised in a family where a man always took his hat off when he walked in a building. You definitely took your hat off when you walked into a public building. Now, if you're a female, you're allowed to keep the hat on, or if you're a male, under arms, you can keep the hat on. And I like to see that kind of enforced at this council meeting to bring the standards of attire up a little bit, number one. Number two, I've been remiss by not harassing our city clerk or the minister of the meeting. Janet, I think they are beautiful. I love them, I can read them, they're good English, and would you believe, this Yankee can actually understand them. Now, number three, the last council meeting, my cook and a gentleman from the planning commission came forward, and they want the city council to give them the authority to interview and appoint planning commissioners. I think this council should draft a letter for the mayor's signature and ask for those gentlemen's resignation. The minute a commission gets so powerful that they can dictate, it's time to move them on. Now, I could be wrong, but I have traveled, I've been in more cities, attended more city meetings, planning commission meetings, and what have you than probably this whole group here. And I also belong to the APA here in Arkansas. Because I have been in over 350 cities, California, Oregon, Nevada, and Alaska, and I always attended meetings when I was in those cities to do city gradings and inspections. So I think the city council should draft a letter for the mayor's signature and ask him for these two gentlemen's resignation. The third thing, Mayor, I don't know how you're going to handle this. I'd like to give you a presentation, if you'd please come down. Yeah, you could. I promise I'll behave. I told you I was going to take over my time tonight. Now, the first check I gave you is for a hundred dollars from my family to the city of Lowell for the building, for the new city hall. I'd like to challenge every family in the city of Lowell to contribute a hundred dollars. Now, if you look at a hundred dollars, there's what, about 5,000 buildings in the city of Lowell apartments? That's $500,000. Wouldn't that be nice? Perry, don't worry, I've got one more for you. I have another check here for a thousand dollars that I'd like to give you, and it's for the city hall. Now, I'd like to challenge every city, I mean, every business in this city to do a like contribution. Now, just driving down 71B, I counted ninety-some businesses. That's ninety-some thousand dollars. I don't know how many licensed businesses we have in Lowell, but this is part of the surplus funds we have, because I was taught you tie nine percent to the church and one percent elsewhere. So this is the extra, this leftover, Perry.
Mr. Schumaker, we have 198 businesses presently.
I thank you very much. And...
We can do that.
Thank you. I want to thank you on behalf of the council and all the citizens, guy, and we'll certainly put this to good use someday, I hope, and maybe sooner than later. Eldon Long, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withhold my comments and questions until we deal with Section 8 amendments.
Okay. Tom just had a good idea. It costs $1,100 to come up here and talk. Who's next? Glenn? Glenn, do you... Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak? First, all accepting contributions. Next item on the agenda is a committee report, and it'll be parks, recreation, and special events, by Sean Ingram.
On the parks committee now is meeting, and we roughly have the north 31 acres that we're putting a footprint on. We're putting a footprint on to lay out whatever activities. It's been suggested, we kind of went through a prioritization of soccer fields, playgrounds, and concessions, restrooms, and we're constructing around that at this point. Our next meeting, because of the President's Day holiday, will be this coming Monday, and hopefully we can have that somewhat in a rough draft, and then the next Monday being March 5, I believe. I'd like to invite the public, whoever would like to come and kind of look over it and express ideas or any input they might have. Six o'clock. Well, that one, for the March 5, if they so decide that we want to do that, I'd like to do that at the training room.
Janet tells me we can get that in our newsletter, which is going to be coming out here in the next few days. So we'll put it in there for March 5 at six o'clock. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
March 5 is also a planning commission meeting and workshop meeting that night.
Sean, I appreciate your eagerness, but on behalf of the staff, we would like to ask you to coordinate the timing of these things with us. We are really under pressure to... But anyway, we've been making commitments to people about having this done on a certain time, this done on a certain time, and we had not at all planned to have exhibits and things ready for you by that date. So that catches me a little off-guard. So I'd just like to ask for mercy and working together with our overall schedule of things we have to do.
We need to be coordinated with Melanie or myself for the city calendar.
That's the March 5 meeting, Gary, the public meeting.
We'll just postpone that at this point.
I'd like to get back with Tony. You know, Tony has to draw some drawings. I've got him on, we have two other things that we promised people that we would get done that we don't have done yet, and so that's kind of came as a surprise to me. Thank you.
Old Business, Ordinance Amending Section 8 of the Lowell City Code of Ordinances, Overlay District Revisions. Gary?
Mayor and council members, we discussed this last time, and since then, we've had different people call city hall and have questions, and it's obvious now that there is some confusion about the overlay district and the expanding the boundaries of the overlay district. For instance, we've had questions about the sign requirements. Well, the sign ordinance for the city of Lowell was passed after the overlay district ordinance, and it supersedes the sign paragraph, there's a paragraph in the overlay district about signs, but the signed ordinance for the city of Lowell supersedes, overrides, the overlay district. So the overlay district sign requirements are not any more strict or asking for any more than the city sign ordinance. That's a misconception, misunderstanding. And then the idea about expansions, that when you expand, the overlay district only applies to the new part of the building, it doesn't retroactive back to the existing part of the building. Those are two things, but obviously there are several other misunderstandings, I think, about the overlay district requirement. So I think it would be wise for us to slow down the review of this boundary expansion in order to be able, for the sake of unity in the city and for the sake of everybody being on the same page, I think it would be good for us to prepare a comparison, a summary of the overall overlay district requirements, how they compare to normal requirements, and have a public meeting for people to have input, to ask questions, and to find out more about it. Also, I want to draw a graphic to show the areas that we're adding to the overlay district Anyway, so I think some communication and some time for people to absorb this and get familiar with it is in order and appropriate. So with that, we would like to just, we're not really asking you to take any action on this tonight, and just wanted you to know that we feel like that's the best plan going forward. It may take us a couple of months to get through that, but I don't think there's any urgency there. For example, to give you some examples of things that have been built in the overlay district, the Zero Mountain Building was expanded, and it's in the overlay district without any problem with those property owners. We are now reviewing a cell tower permit in the overlay district. So you can build a cell tower in the overlay district, the storage buildings out on Robinson Avenue in the overlay district, and a FedEx trucking terminal. So I think folks are maybe a little too fearful of what that overlay district means and that we could take some time to help them understand, and it would be a time well spent. So with that, I hope that's okay, if we just let that, if we take a pass on this issue on the agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we postpone the ordinance.
I'll second that. Any comments?
Yes, Ted. This would be for Mr. Kiklak. The ordinance that we voted on last meeting, I would assume is going to be significantly different than what comes forward in the future. I don't think it would be appropriate to move ahead to a second reading at that time. Can we just abolish the first reading and start over from scratch when he comes forward with the recommended changes?
Mr. Mayor, you can simply leave the first reading just as it is. If you never have a second or a third, or suspend the rules to pass it, it'll just go away. It doesn't exist right now as an ordinance because it hadn't been passed. And then if a new one does come along, we'll probably want to clean that up by saying, you know, we want to formally begin the process with the new one. Instead of calling it a second reading, we'll start from the beginning, and either have three readings in three separate days, or we'll suspend the rule and pass it one night. Now, the reason you might want to have a motion to table it is so if someone was looking back in a year or two or three, they would see that it was on the agenda that day, and the minutes would reflect that it was tabled. And they could trace through and see if it was ever brought up again. It's a good idea to go ahead and table it, it's on the agenda.
Eldon?
Mr. Mayor, Eldon Long, 1012 Burrell. I think it's an excellent idea to table it for a while, because I think there are going to be several other items that we're going to have to look at in Section 8 as well, and I'd like, I think it would save a lot of time to maybe join some of those other issues that might be forthcoming from future planning commission meetings. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to thank Gary Carahan for taking an initiative to look at the city and make sure that this was something that we wanted to hold off on. I appreciate that.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Next item on the agenda is an waive competitive bidding as it relates to the purchase of a track hole.
Tony and Jimmy are not able to be here tonight, but if you've read, we feel like we have financially a good opportunity here. Frankly, when we made out the budget, we had assumed that in order to get this equipment traded and get what we wanted, we would have to maintain our same payment, monthly payment, and probably be out of pocket about $15,000 of extra expense. This particular offer that we have in hand will give us a lower interest rate, a lower monthly payment, and no out-of-pocket expense. And we'll be able to take a piece of equipment that we don't really need anymore and have instead a new piece of equipment that is very versatile and that we can use for a lot of different maintenance-type projects around the city. So I'll just see if you have any questions about this ordinance.
Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council? Eric?
If I remember correctly, Mr. Davis had reported back to us last meeting that there wasn't any other competitive bids at that point, because nobody was actually willing to trade in that other piece of equipment. Is that not true?
That's correct. They made several phone calls, talked to different equipment suppliers, and the people, the company that we originally bought the roller from would not consider a trade-in at all. So we pretty much exhausted, we thought we had pretty much exhausted our options, and that's why when we did the budget, we put an extra $15,000 in there, because we thought we were going to have to really take a hit on trading that in. So then this company stepped forward and made us an offer, which is, you know, much, much better than anything else we had.
You're saying we're going to actually save $15,000?
$15,000, that was in the budget. Yes. Plus, we have a calculator of payment here, but it's at a lower interest rate and it's a lower principal amount, so I think I can figure out the payment's going to be lower.
That was on a lease purchase, though. This is going to be on a five-year term. That may not necessarily be true.
Well, actually, the other one was actually a purchase also. It was a five-year, I think it was the same number of years.
That was at the end of five years, though, where we assumed the payment after that, purchase payment after that point.
I'm not sure about that. You probably, Ted, I believe you know more about that than I do. Sorry, Tony couldn't be here, because he knows all the nitty-gritty of it.
Mr. Carahan, I checked this out myself with my own sources, and this is an excellent purchase, an excellent interest rate, and Tony and whoever else worked on this done an excellent job.
Jimi Hendrix, our guitar player.
Keith.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we place this ordinance on third and final reading, suspend the rules, and read by time only.
I'll second that. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Motion for due pass here. Second it.
Eric, second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Hear a motion on the emergency clause.
I'd like to move that we pass the emergency clause due to the fact that we've got so much willing to deal with this and before they take that off the table.
Should we read the ordinance first?
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding as it relates to the purchase of a track hole. Any comments?
Second.
Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
It's been a long day, and I've been wanting to do this.
That was easy. Thank you, Gary.
That will be ordinance seven, seven, seven.
New business, the resolution changing code enforcement to code compliance. Billy Hensley.
Um, a lot of cities are going from, uh, code enforcement to code compliance, as far as the name goes, and the reason for that is, uh, uh, to not get it confused with law enforcement and other departments. Also, uh, it sounds a lot better when we approach people, you know, and tell them that we're from code compliance department instead of code enforcement, and it sounds like we're fixing to force something on them that they don't want to do, and we're really there to help them to come into compliance with city codes, not to force them to do anything.
Any comments from the audience? Comments from the council?
Was there some kind of research that showed that code compliance officers get paid more than code enforcement officers?
No.
I'd like to move that we approve the, uh, resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
That will be resolution zero seven dash zero six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. That includes things like security lights, right? Good. Next item on the agenda is authorization to negotiate a lease for emergency commission towers subject to legal council review. Chief Leroy Barker.
First of all, it's not a commission tower. I know that Janet's not really up on all this stuff. It's supposed to be a communication tower, but that's okay. We talked about it briefly, and I can understand this. Um, be glad to answer any questions any of y'all have. I think y'all have got everything in your packet, uh, as to what we're trying to accomplish here. I'm really not going to go into any detail unless y'all have questions, but I'll be glad to answer anything you might have.
Any comments? Do I hear any objections?
No objections. Chief, why don't you explain where it's going to be, for those that don't understand where it's at?
What we're, what we're actually doing for the crowd that doesn't have a copy of the packet is we're replacing the existing tower at the fire station. It'll actually be about physically twenty feet from the existing tower. Uh, we will have a little bit more ground space right around the tower covered than we do now, but our current tower is, is a guy wire type tower, uh, which makes it have about a two hundred, about two hundred footprint on the ground that we can't do anything with. It's actually encapsulating our whole building. Uh, when the new tower goes up, it'll be no guy wire, it's called a monopole, uh, which will be a single structure. Yes, sir, it will. Currently, the fire department has one, uh, repeater on the tower, and the police department has one. When we get finished, we'll actually have two, uh, the police will have two repeaters, and the fire will have two repeaters. Uh, we're also adding a street department repeater that doesn't exist now. Um, they are going to move all of our wireless communications, as far as our computer networks, whatever, both the nine hundred and two point four over to the new tower, and raise it, which, uh, should help us there. Sure some of y'all have got the question, why is this happening for nothing? And it's not happening for nothing. Um, Smith Communications has agreed to put this tower in and grant us the total top section of the tower, the whole top of it will be dedicated to the city of Lowell. They want to use the rest of the tower, uh, to lease out for communications. Uh, we already have Verizon Wireless, which is on board. Uh, they told me today that there's already another carrier, I don't know who it is, that's on board. So that's how they make their money. Uh, it also provides a good service for our people around the city that are looking for wireless internet or cellular telephone, uh, hopefully will upgrade their service. So, looks like a good deal for everybody.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize it.
Second.
Eric, I don't think we need a, a motion. We're just, if nobody has any objections, Chief Barker and Tom can go ahead with the negotiation. We're just merely bringing you up to date on what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I, I might just, and then there again, I don't think it requires a motion or a second, but, uh, for the sake of Smith Communications and the money they're spending on this, I think we need something in the, in the minutes, maybe to authorize you to sign the lease, or, uh, you know, move ahead with the lease program on it, just, just so they're comfortable with it.
Okay. Just so y'all are clear, the mayor's a sole contracting agent for the city. He signs all contracts and leases, makes all purchases and sales. Some of those things come before you for permission, like sale of surplus property. And of course, you can't buy anything that's not in the budget, so you ultimately control that. But as far as actually inking contracts and leases, that's the mayor's sole power, but it's awfully courteous of the chief and mayor to make sure you guys are all aware of what's going on, especially, eventually a tower's going to go up, you know, whether it already is a tower, of course. But I guess, Mayor, if you just want to ask, you know, take a, uh, say that, uh, with no objection, you're going to be assuming the power given to you by state law, and if anyone objects, they can say so. It's not the minutes that reflect, there's no objection.
Are there any objections to the mayor signing the lease once it's negotiated? None so recorded. Thank you, Leroy.
One other quick thing, too. I'd just like to let you know that I do plan on taking this to the planning commission, just to make them aware of what we're doing. Uh, typically, that would have happened last night, but since that was holiday, it kind of reversed, reversed the meetings, but, uh, we want to make sure everybody knows what's going on, so when, when the questions start, we've got the answers.
Chief, while you're there, why don't you explain to the public how many years this will be, and what a savings it'll be for the city?
Uh, we're talking about a thirty-year lease on the tower. Uh, the tower will be ours through that thirty-year period. Uh, as far as the top portion of it, and what that amounts to basically, is we're going to be using three antennas on top of it right now, plus our wireless. Uh, we will be able to run up to fourteen antennas or fourteen repeaters if we ever wanted to, uh, which no city in northwest Arkansas is running that much at this time. Gives us plenty of expansion, plenty of room to do what we need to do in the future. Also, all of the maintenance on all these repeaters, there again, for you people that don't know it, is covered under the contract, uh, will be at no maintenance. It's all covered.
So this will put Lowell, Arkansas on the map?
Well, maybe a little.
Maybe a little.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leroy. Next item on the agenda is a moratorium exemption request by T.R. Sanders Construction.
I'm Tom Sanders. Uh, my office is at one oh eight Washington. Did everybody get a copy of what we're trying to do? What we've got is three lots over there, and there was an existing house on one of the lots that was built in approximately eighteen eighty-two. We demoed that house, and, uh, what we want to do now is build three new houses in the, on those three lots. And, uh, from what I understand, with the city of Springdale, that when that sewer system was put in originally, that they didn't make allotments for lots. All they did was supply a tap for an existing home. So that's why there's no taps on that, that line right now.
You're requesting two additional taps?
Two additional taps.
Gary, do you want to address that?
We, um, I met with the city of Springdale, um, when Tom came forward on that, and we pulled out the old plans and their position, and I, uh, my position was that, uh, they would have counted those lots because they were pre-pat, planted lots, uh, and that we shouldn't have to ask for new taps. Their position was, after looking at the drawings, that they would not have counted those because they, uh, old part of Lowell, they would have just counted the houses that were there, and there's no tap shown on that sewer main. So that's why, uh, yeah, I instructed Mr. Sanders that he should come and ask you for those two taps. In the meantime, the mayor, uh, thought I should go back and ask again, so I have called them and left a message and, um, to try to follow up on that, tell them then that we, uh, don't agree with that opinion, and that they, we shouldn't have to ask for these two additional taps. Um, but I think for Mr. Sanders' sake, if you don't mind, I, uh, that we should, that you should perhaps consider approving the taps, and then if we can get Springdale to change their opinion, then it becomes a moot point. But in the meantime, we're kind of, we're holding him up from moving forward of this construction because, uh, of this delay and, uh, you know, and, and quite frankly, my, um, I'd say it's a fifty-fifty or last chance that Springdale will change their opinion about that. So, um, I also wanted to share with you that we have twenty-three and a half taps right now, so.
Mr. Carnehan, are we still looking at, uh, July, early July?
Uh, we're having, we're having delays with the construction because of some underground water, uh, that they've encountered out there, so I'm gonna, I'm saying now August. We don't have an official adjusted time yet. We're negotiating that with a contractor. Uh, I'm objecting to some of his claims, and so that may drag on for a bit. But anyways, I would say we're probably looking at August, on the sewer main being here. The other sewer taps that I know of that are, uh, the only other one that we know of besides these two, is there's a building going through, uh, planning commission process right now called Center on the Creeks, next to the First Security Bank. They had originally, uh, come forward, you remember, wanting one tap or something like that, but now they're, they've kind of held off, they haven't come back to you because they're, uh, trying to get a restaurant to go in there. But they, uh, they don't know for sure yet, so that's sitting out there as a possibility. Those are, that's the only other building that we know of right now that is on the sewer system, uh, that's in the planning process.
How many taps does a restaurant take, approximately?
I would say, um, you know, um, five to fifteen range, depending on how big it is. Let's see if we have any examples in here. I don't see any examples here. The Arby's building, the shops at the Vineyard and the Arby's total, ten point six.
Any comments, Guy?
I understand here.
Yes.
I'd like to ask a very question. There is the Alpha Chemical coming out, and, uh, I talked to it a week last month, and we did find out how many taps they had, and that they could get those taps turned back to the city. Yeah, I have not, uh, pursued that. But there were, there were some rumors that they had seven years to actually plan. And, uh, if we could have a little bit, we could.
Any other comments? Ted?
I, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Sanders at the museum with, with Glenn Jones about six months ago, I guess it was, and you had similar ideas back then, and I, I know at that time I encouraged you, you had had some problems with, with planning and so forth, and I encouraged you to come forward and try again, and, and I'm not going to let you down. I'm going to move that we grant the exemption on your taps.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
I thank you.
You're set to go. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance, amending ordinance number seven one zero of the city of Lowell, Arkansas, authorizing the issuance and sale of capital improvement revenue bonds, series two thousand and six, and describing other matters relating thereto. Gary?
This is the same item that we, uh, introduced the meeting with, uh, in, during the public comment period, so, uh, I'll just make myself available, any questions that you might have.
Mr. Carnehan, how mu, how much of the one point eight, one point nine million dollars are we going to use, or are we going to allocate for the, uh, sewer improvements? Are we, are we taking that whole chunk and putting it toward that, or?
Uh, no, we, um, in the budget.
I think it was a million dollars.
Um, in the budget that was approved, there is, I think, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars going toward the park. Um, three hundred thousand from last year carried over, and a hundred and fifty thousand to match the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we won, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, out of that one point eight, one point nine, uh, Cindy's here, she might know exactly how much it is, but it's pretty close in that range. So there's about one point three million dollars, uh, available. And what, where we'll go from here, if you approve this ordinance, what this does is it gives us then the flexibility to use it for sewer. It doesn't mean that we have to use every penny for sewer or what. It doesn't mean exactly how we have to spend the money, it just gives us the option to spend the money on gravity sewer, which we don't have at this time. Um, then we'll put together some projects, bring them to you, uh, we'll have to decide where the priorities are, and how much each one will cost, and so on and so forth. I could easily write up about three million dollars worth of sewer projects. So, um, you know, we'll have to make some decisions, obviously, we won't be able to afford to do that, and some of them may be built in oh seven and some in oh eight. We'll get into those deep, you know, we'll work through those details together.
Have we looked at, uh, creating an ordinance to, uh, kind of recoup what we're putting toward this? Because what we're doing is we're ba, basically, uh, running, uh, lines from our main, the main sewer line. Have we looked at creating an ordinance to help recoup some of those funds that we're putting toward that now? As developers come in and they build, I mean, maybe some type of impact fee, so we can pay it toward the bond? Have we looked at doing that?
This fund?
Yes.
Uh, yes, uh, I have looked at that. We haven't done that yet, but, um, depending on, like, that's, again, that's something that we need to look at. Depending on where we build and, um, the ti, um, how you want to do it, we could, uh, my thought was to create a watershed fee, you've heard me say that before, uh, over the land area that would drain into that pipeline, and then, uh, charge, uh, developers, new builders, uh, a rate, uh, s, to, um, help pay that off, help pay back. Actually, in this case, it would be, um, if we use this bond money, this bond money's going to be paid back by franchise fees, not by, you, that's what we have to use to pay it back. So, the, um, but the other monies could be then used to, um, hopefully replenish that fund and either extend those sewer mains further on, or put in other sewer mains. We have areas of the city that the, um, that are undersized, that need to be parallel or enlarged in size for a section because they're flat, or whatever. So there are two or three areas like that that we need to look at upsizing as time goes on also, so. on also, so. Mr. Kiklak will be, um, excited to help me with those. I'm glad you said my name, because if, if anyone's reading the paper, keep it up with the legislature, you may know that a bill's been introduced to, uh, not only prohibit any more passage of such fees, but to refund any such fees that have been collected to this point. Where in the world they expect, you know, cities to obtain funds to build infrastructure to keep up with development and to keep people being able to just dispose of their wastewater? I don't know. But if that bill were to pass the legislature, that would be, that would completely prohibit the kind of method that you're thinking about. Pick up the phone and call your legislator and your senator, that'd be a terrific idea.
Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council?
I've got a concern that it hasn't been answered to this point, and that's on the, the DITCOM tower that, that planning commission has been looking at out on the Blanchard property, as well as the new tower at the fire station. I'm still of the opinion that there's potential there for franchise fees for those private consumers that are going to use those towers. And until somebody proves to me otherwise that there's no opportunity there, I'm gonna believe that there is, so.
I think we're looking at you again, Mr. Kiklak.
I tried to do that. I, I, you know, I tried, you know, changed my mind.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion and a second, please?
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
What's to make a motion?
Suspend the role, I'm sorry.
Second. Probably should suspend the rules. Read by title only and...
It's on suspending the rules and placing on third and final reading. Marty Latham?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Camilla Lamans?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
I'll entertain it. Okay. An ordinance, amending ordinance number seven one zero of the city of Lowell, Arkansas, authorizing the issuance and sale of capital improvement revenue bonds, series two thousand and six, and prescribing other materials relating thereto. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for due pass?
Second.
Any comments? Row call, please.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Camilla Lamans?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
That'll be ordinance seven, seven, eight.
Thank you, Gary.
Can't help yourself, can you, Gary?
Next item on the agenda. Appropriations of funds memo to authorize a transfer of unal, unallocated funds for the purpose of purchasing business cards for city council members. Carol?
I brought this to the mayor's attention some, few weeks ago, and, uh, because it had been brought up to my attention that we all needed to look professional, be professional, and I had suggested that if, in doing so, that we all had same business cards, and we all looked alike. And when we went out to visit somebody, we could have a business card with our name, address, phone number on it, where people could get ahold of us, instead of writing it on a napkin or a post-it note. So here we are. I urge you to let us all look professional.
Any comments?
Yes, sir, I do. Um, I know that, uh, there are different venues of which you can get free cards. I've used a particular of those, uh, Vista Prints being one of them, and, uh, before we go, moving funds around, I just wonder if we could maybe, uh, pursue one of those avenues.
Who gives free cards?
Vista Prints. That's true.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion and a second?
I make a motion to pass this.
Second.
Ted Morrell. Row call, please.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Camilla Lamans?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
That will be appropriation zero two dash two thousand and seven.
Do we have any committee meetings to set? If not, a move we adjourn. Thank you all for coming out. Come back and see us.